Um. Uh, meeting Wednesday, June fifth, twenty twenty four. I know that would have been funny to get her voice on recording.
I've never heard Mickey with a Texas accent.
Yeah, all right, uh, starting off, uh, public comments as I look, I do not see public, so I'm going to move on to elected officials and department heads. Catherine and Aaron, you are first on my list, so do you have something? To bring forward, I believe you do, and I believe that Davis has the pictures to show too, along with them up here. So yeah, it's your show, Catherine.
All right, well, as you know, Aaron has come from the school system. And one of the things that's come to our attention is the children's play structure. In our back, just off the patio. Had it's it's in dire need of repair. And so I'm gonna let Aaron take it from here, and he's sent the photos up to Davis. And we're just looking for some guidance on if you think we ought to be looking to repair it, if you think we ought to be looking to. Get rid of it, dismantle it, or if you think we could see if somebody would would take it off our hands, but let me have Aaron. Go through, because he's really put some thought into this, so I'll let Aaron take it from here.
Yeah, so um, so as far as the play structure is concerned, so it it came to my attention. Um, uh, last week, late last week, that that we needed to do some repairs, so I went out there. Um, looked at the play structure, um, it is. Uh, an older pressure-treated play structure, um. And there's some repairs that we need to make, um, and you know, you know, you know, Catherine had mentioned it coming from a school district. Um, you know, uh, play structures are are, you know, highly regulated in in New Hampshire, there's a lot of. A lot of key things that need to go into it, so you know, some of the things that that we need to do, so. Um, if if you're looking at the pictures, so there's some supports to the swing, uh, there's actually one, um, at some point, there was a men- two mending plates. That they use to, um. Um, repair the the uh, the four by four post, um, the the. The play structure needs to be pressure washed, there's a, there's a ton of mildew on it. Um, and, um, you know, it really needs to be sanded, it's it's really quite weathered, um, so. You know, splinters, livers, things of that nature, um, you know, the, all of those, those things could 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 injure a child. Um, you know, and then we also need to probably at some point soon reapply like, you know, a protective finish to it, you know, restain it. Um, you know, to to make it look a little bit nicer now, we have picked up the four by four posts. Um, and that was before, um, I had a conversation with Catherine. Um, and we were talking about, um, you know, what is the long-term, um, plan for the structure? Um, and we talked about a great many things, we talked about, and actually Catherine had mentioned it. Um, it really is just too close to the sidewalk, um, and, um, if there's a child on the swing. Um, and they jump off, they land on the concrete run, fall, um, you know, there's, um, there's some injuries. That, um, that could happen there, um, and then, you know, the other thing too is, you know, do you wanna consider? You know, um, you know, certified, you know, um, playground wood chips for it. Um, really what that does is, um, in all really public play structures, um, they they put down. Um, you know, either certified, um, playground chips, or you know, there's other materials that they put down, but what that does is. Um, if a child was to fall, fall off the structure, um, they fall off the swing. Um, they trip, anything, anything, anything like that, it provides a cushion, um, for the child. Which minimizes, um, injury, so you know, one of, one of the questions that I had was, you know, do we wanna consider doing that for this? Um, you know, and you know, the, the, the conversation that we had was, it is very old, um, and it's not used. Very often, so, um, we were looking for guidance from, from the commissioners, um, to, to, you know. You know, see what we should be thinking of doing, whether it's, you know, putting the effort in to, um. Um, making it safer, um. You know, that that's one, one possibility, the other possibility would be to, you know, remove the structure, um, donate it. Um, if it's, if it's important to the, the county, do we think about long-term plans of putting in? Maybe an engineered play structure that, um, you know, from, um, like, uh, you know, you know, Primax's. Um, you know, you know, as as far as our, you know, insurance company is concerned, you know, that would make them feel more comfortable. Um, with it, um, so there, there's, there are a range of of things that we could do with it. Um, really what what we're looking for is is some guidance.
But it sounds to me, if I can bet your opinion, that you guys wanna get rid of it. Because I don't think, it doesn't sound like it gets used very much, if ever, that a fair statement?
That that is a fair statement.
Um, and that. Uh, otherwise, being budget-conscious, you wouldn't see it valuable to spend budget dollars on something that doesn't get used anywhere.
That's right, and you know, the thing too, I, 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 I think, ju- just, just to point out. Um, I don't know the exact age of it, although I was talking with one person and and he recalled his kids playing on it. You know, fifteen years ago, um, you know, even though we certainly, um, have gotten, um. You know, life out of that, it's it's been for a long time.
Well, that that kid's thirty now, so, uh, we don't, we don't need to worry about him.
Did the auxiliary find out?
Uh, yeah, yeah, who, who, who bought that, uh, Catherine, do you remember who funded that?
It was part of the little house, partway up the hill when we ran the daycare.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I couldn't tell you where the funding came from, if it was from the commissioners, or if it was a donation, but it's. It's gotta be well past its useful life and. Honestly, knowing that Primax, it's unsafe, we should really just, I think we should get rid of it, and the question would be. Can we find someone who would be willing to come and get it and not cost the county? Anything, or is that a liability if somebody takes it and something happens and it belonged to the county and we gave it away? Um, there is a cost if we have to break it down in terms of Aaron's team's time and the cost of disposing of it. So, looking for guidance.
Who in fact uses it now? Is it, is it, um, are there any grandkids of residents who who come to play on it?
I haven't seen anybody use it for years, but of course I don't sit out back all the time. Rarely does anybody use it, and obviously during the pandemic, it's at idle for two, three years.
Okay, to be honest with you, Bruce, Bruce, at one point when we were walking about during, uh, during, at some point, I, I, I wanna say right after construction was completed. Said that this is something that we should take a look at at some point down the road, he said, the people that you're utilizing it. Our staff, and if you look at the dragging of the feet, I'm guessing that is a hundred percent correct. You know, he said, if anybody uses it, it's, you know, they come out here and they just sort of relax and swing back and forth. And that's it, but he said, I haven't seen anybody on it in years.
Well, I, I think this is why God made chainsaws, and you can dismantle it.
Yeah, and and just, just, um, just, just one other quick little point. Um, the condition that it's in now, we, we, we certainly couldn't have anybody on it because there, there are. Like I said, so when you're looking at the picture of that vertical support to the swing, it is broken, um, it's, it's not safe, so. Um, like I said, last week, we, you know, we had picked up, uh, two four by fours to replace that, and then. Um, you know, when I was having a conversation with Catherine, we started talking about it, and, um.
Yeah, well, I, I, uh. I think we're fine with getting rid of it, how do you get rid of it, I, I'll leave up to you guys, I guess. Uh, if we, uh, give it away as is, where is, I wanna be sure that we make somebody know that. Without repairs is probably not safe, and so I'm a little concerned about donating it without. Without an adequate, no, uh, 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 acceptance of the risk to have to repair it, if it's gonna be meaningful.
My thing is if somebody wants the swings, if somebody wants the slide. You know, those, you know, even the top that goes over the, the, the canopy that goes over the top, that's fine. They can, and they can build their own thing and utilize those parts.
How about we, how about we, uh, have, uh. Kind of a silent auction where somebody donates money to the auxiliary. Um, and the highest price gets the free swings there, I mean, some of it is not. Some of it's usable.
Yeah, highest price gets the free.
Yeah, highest price gets the free stuff, that, that's a government concept. Uh, paying for your free stuff.
Yeah.
But otherwise.
Get rid of it.
I'm, I'm fine with. Getting rid of it.
Likewise. Do you wanna motion?
Uh, I think that's administratively.
I know, yeah, I was beginning to wonder why for the even coming.
Well, because it, well, because there is that statute that says anything with a value, granted, that's probably not over three hundred dollars, but then again, the law, I don't, I don't know, but. Essentially, there is a statute that requires getting permission to dispose of county assets, even though we can't determine when.
So do we, do we think that we have an obligation to seek some sort of value from a bidder, right?
No, I think you, I think making a motion, though, is appropriate, that you're basically giving permission to dispose of this, and. That if it can, if there's somebody, I'm getting the impression that if there's somebody that really wants it run, recognizing the risk. That it's as is, and we don't accept liability, take it, but otherwise. Burn it and then invite all the youngsters back and they can cook some always on it.
We, yeah, we cause more issues.
That would be a separate liability issue.
Okay.
I will disavow any knowledge of that, actually. Uh. Are you guys comfortable with that, our comment?
We, we are, and then just aside of that. To Cheryl's point, do we get to make our best educated guess as to that three hundred dollars so that we don't keep coming back to you with? There's a number of trivial items still in our non-storage storage. That we've got some ideas for, that would include maybe. Again, raising money for the auxiliary or activity funds, i- if we are allowed to make. A best educated guess at that three hundred dollar level, we could probably. Prevent taking up your time at these meetings.
Well, the only, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, the only thing I would recommend that. You, you, we, we, Chris, keep a log of that, so that if we ever get accused in a, in an expungement of. Giving away county assets, we actually have a log and some estimation of value. So that we can respond to say, yeah, we got rid of this stuff, and here's why, and here was the. Uh, estimated value, just to, again, to be able to track it in case there's an inquiry or somebody complains.
Okay, fabulous, I, I'll work with Chris on that, because we've actually got some more items that are really small, and we'd rather not burden you with it, so.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
So moved, so moved, second?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner, yes and I, motion carries.
All right, that was it for us, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Kim, do you have something for us?
I do. Um, sorry, I, I don't sound like Minnie Mouse, but I'll do my best. Um, I have two requests for leave of absence, um, one of them is, um, an, an exhausted FMLA. Uh, this is a full-time, um, LNA who has been with us for, um, almost five years. Had surgery, um, healing did not go as quickly as planned, um, so we would be looking for an extension or. Um, a leave of absence after her exhausted FMLA to get her to her next appointment where we believe she's gonna be cleared to come back to work. Um, and that would be, um, hopefully returning on July sixteenth.
I so moved, sorry. Okay, in person, see now, Commissioner Wasback, all right. Okay, anything else?
The second one, um, is one of our employees at EMS who does not quite meet the criteria yet for an FMLA. But needs to, um, take some time away due to the death of a family member and travel down south. Um, so it doesn't fall under bereavement, um, it's not that type of family member. Um, but he wanted to make sure that he was crossing all of his Ts and dotting his Is, so I spoke with chief. Um, and then let them know that I would just come and make sure that, uh, this was a leave of absence approved by the commissioners.
Well, okay, too specific, how long has this person been employed?
He's been employed for ten months, um, uh, he's a, I believe he's a valuable employee, someone that we wanna hold on to, he just. Passed his advanced EMT, so is, um, it's just moved up a level. Um, and he's looking for, it looks like to be two weeks, um, to travel down south to help with. Um, the, the issues with the family after this death.
Can I ask a question? This wouldn't have fallen, would this have fallen under FMLA regardless of him being over here? Or would this just be under the general leave policy?
Yeah.
I don't think death is a, is a leave, correct?
Unless mentally, I mean, there's times when, I mean, somebody, you know, let's just say you, your child died or something, we've had people. That ended up subsequently having, uh, a leave of FMLA just because they were distraught. But this, I think, falls under just the general.
General leave of absence.
Whether it was after twelve months or not, so it's that eight-week general leave policy.
This would be without pay, I presume?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I don't believe he has enough earned time at this point to cover it, but we would not be paying him if, if anything. Uh, he may use a, a few hours of vacation, um, with him only having been with us for ten months. Um, I, I'm not sure what he's got accrued at this point.
I'll tell you in a minute. I so move anyway.
This is, uh, this is our, presume, yes, so, yeah, if, if he doesn't have any time to prove, then, yeah, he understands that. That. He, he owns the trip.
He absolutely does.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wasback.
All right. Commissioner, I presume you support this?
I do, yeah.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Doug.
Do you wanna do my semi-annual report now?
Uh, we can, yeah, yeah.
Well, do we, do we have, do you wanna, I mean, happy, happy today?
Because, I mean.
Mrs. and I have a non, a no vote.
Oh, well, I could also.
And we also have, no, well, we also have, uh, Don coming on that you can stay for a little bit.
This, this, this is. For this, probably.
But you're here.
Briefer. Depending on how deep you have questions or anything, but, um. I know he doesn't have enough time to cover all of it between his accruals, but. He understands that, so. Uh, so if you could hand around copies.
Yeah, this is Dr. Check.
It's Dr. Chen.
Oh.
Monopolizing. Uh, so the, the few key topics that I think, think might be of interest is update on federal inmate numbers, uh. Were budgeted for thirty-eight. Uh, that's our second year, I think, at that number, we were budgeted for thirty-five. Back in a couple of years ago, we're averaging right around forty-five point three through end of May. Oh, ninety-two thousand ahead of the revenue projection for these four months year-to-date. It's very, very consistent with last year's performance. If you're good on that, just to touch base on a couple of staff and and staffing related things, um. Uh, don't remember if you met Lauren where, I think you met Lauren at the goodbye for Dawn, right? So she's, she's our new food service director, she's been working out fabulously, very nice.
But, but, I can imagine as a dotting learning curve, to be honest with you, there's various, thirty, twenty, or thirty different dietary.
The religious diets, uh, medical diets is probably the biggest adjustment for.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Uh.
Do we have a sense of the cost per meal across the various dietary?
Um. I don't have, well, it's, we had a cost estimate of around. Two dollars, between two and three dollars per meal at one point, I believe.
Well.
Um.
Right.
It's something Don had calculated, and, um.
It's like a dollar forty-seven.
I'm sure it's gone up, um, obviously with, with inflation, because that's at least. That's before I became superintendent, which was four years ago, I, I just remember hearing that figure.
Yeah.
Um.
So is that food expenses not included in secondary's of the staff?
That's inmate meal.
What, it's like, I believe it's food cost, food cost, typically.
I mean, there's two different ways, of course, to look at it, as a matter of fact, I was gonna look at what the twenty-twenty-three food expenses were, and then if. I mean, I realize.
It's not too hard to figure out, you could, to take the census, and I'll, I'll go ahead and we'll do an updated cost, I'll. Report it out at a future meeting.
It just ties back to the, the cost of food, and what we put in the budget, and how we track it, and we estimate what food costs, I mean.
Um, but presumably, there's not included personnel. Well, the, the food, the food cost as a total budget line does include staff. It's gonna be harder to calculate a per-meal cost, because knowing which staff are eating and how often in which meals.
I think he's talking about the dietary staff, the labor that goes into, is that what you mean, the labor that goes into preparing the meals?
Yeah, no, no, that, that would necessarily include the labor, that. Two to three dollar guestimate that I made, that's not labor.
That includes the toast and Cheerios and the eggs for breakfast.
Yeah.
The, the only reasons particularly important when you're tracking is that it can dramatically affect your operating cost, because. You know, if you go from a sliced meat to something else, or, or sauces and. Various mixes, you can, you can increase your food cost quite a bit, and, and it's, it's not, you wouldn't necessarily do that, but. You have, you have to be careful, when you put the menu together, what the cost of the food's gonna be to put out those various menus.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the gourmet dining.
We track it a lot closer.
Yeah. Um. Correctional officer staffing, uh, is much improved, but forty-two out of forty-four. Frontline positions are filled, all the supervisory and admin positions are currently filled. Um. What been, we were tracking app, applications and and some information around hiring, actually seeing about the same number of applicants. Year-to-date this year as last, um. The wage adjustment that was supported by you and approved clearly has made a difference. Since the news of that hit approximately December, there's been zero. Voluntary terminations of correctional officers, there's been eight terminations since then, but none. That I'd call fully voluntary, like, I'm leaving for greener pastures with one person, I think. We allow to resign voluntarily rather than probably get terminated. Yeah. Um, the turnover rate, just to give you a sense of the eight. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, we had a fifty-six percent turnover rate among the correctional officers. In twenty-three, it was fifty-two percent, so we're clearly doing much better. And, um.
It, it'll be interesting, Chad, for you to track your own turnover rate as you.
Yes.
Once, once we settle in.
Yeah.
I'm hoping it's very low.
And.
Does Kim track that separately?
I don't know if she.
On a monthly basis, she gives me turn off, and a list of turnovers, and the reason why.
Um. The other thing worth mentioning is that there was an increase in differential pay for the transport. Team to, to get certified officers, um, we were struggling a little bit to get those numbers. And with the number of medical transports going up and the Fed business, it was important to, to keep that team up in numbers and. Whether it had to do with the pay, I can't say for sure, but we bumped that differential from three dollars an hour to four fifty. And there were sixteen new applicants for the transport team. I believe we just finished qualifying on the range, and I think nine of the sixteen were able to qualify. Um, so. Again, uh, thank you for the support around helping. With wages and finances, I have no doubt that it's stabilized, um. Things with the existing staff, the retention side of things looks really good these days.
And Scott Bluffland was our federal liaison on the way in today, pulled me aside and said, I just want to know if. The, the a- added funding that you put in board has made all the difference in the world across the board. And he said, I, I see a different level of morale here, um, and that, that there's a, a level of calm with the expectations. And how the operate, how, how the facility's being run, but more importantly, people feel like you heard them when they asked, and they respect that, and he said. Is there always gonna be that one or two person that rumbles about anything, I think, yes, but clear, strong majority are very thankful. And that's, it's helping me with my, my transports and across the whole campus.
Yeah.
And are all of the federal inmates transported by us coming and going, or do, do, do the marshals come and bring them in, and then we move them around afterwards?
Uh, by us.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I don't think we're getting any marshals transports at all.
And these are all over Vermont?
Mostly, there's been one or two out of Rhode Island, and two or three, and two or three in New Hampshire. And the rest, the vast majority are certainly Vermont.
And he, and we're at forty-five, I think the peak is fifty, then they're always saying, can you take more?
Yeah, they like the program. The business, the business is booming, um. I mentioned this, we're thinking about trying to renegotiate the rate, not necessarily the per diem rate for lodging. Which is the one oh five a day, but our hourly rate for transports where we're, we're basically losing money. Now, that last rate increase, I think, goes back to two thousand twelve. We're not gonna scare the business away, but I think we're in a strong position in terms of their need and the. Excellent service that we provide for them. Which is a lot to do with the transports, when they want people to move, picked up, uh, brought to court. It's something that we're able to be right on top of, and I think that's the area. Although I think they recognize we do an excellent job managing them once they're in-house, dealing with the. Various medical issues that'll come up, or dealing with the complaints and grievances, how we handle those, they seem to. So appreciate how we do.
Will we calculate that the same as we calculate kind of the other rates like for towns that you two figure out? Our highest transport team rate in order to set the.
At least to present, yeah, you.
Do a little history too.
Average or the highest.
When they're not transporting, what are they doing?
When they're not transporting?
When the transport team's not transporting, um, on the floor.
Well, one of them's a shared position with community corrections, so he could be helping her out, um, and. On the floor sometimes, but honestly, they're huge, it's rare that they're in the facility, they're, they're spending. Part of, uh, almost every day, it'd be rare they'd have a, a day at, at all where they're not doing a transport, and some of those are local, like. To plan, uh, doctor's appointments, dental appointments, um. Unplanned transports. Staffing at the hospital, if, which I'm gonna talk about, the unscheduled transports, um.
So they're not part of your daily FTEs, because you have your daily FTEs that have to be here, and then they pick up these extra shifts. Whether it's overtime or whether it's.
They, they'd cover, um, like, when I say cover on the floor, it might be. That, um, somebody calls out and they stay late till another officer comes in, they, they cover something for an hour or two. Um, they cover, uh, an uncloaked search, you know, because the staffing, not, staff's a lower. Um, they cover a uncaught search, you know, because the staffing, not staff's a lower in that particular day. They don't do a full shift on the floor like ever. There's too much other work.
So the only reason I bring that up is burn rate, you know, if there that some of the local transports are not federal, that there's normal inmate transports?
Yes.
But to the extent we need to think about calculating the transport rate for feds is uh includes the 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 amount of time they're spending around on Clark, not transporting, you know what I mean?
But can I just ask, so that I'm understanding, if otherwise, if Joe Schmo came in to do a transport with Scott because he called him in and there was nothing else going on in the facility, when they got back, he'd clock out and leave. Is is that for?
Transport.
Was he? No, but I I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I'm not following.
If a transport, the team, so a common example is that there's a couple, there's several now on third shift. We do runs over to Me- Keen Metro more often than I'd like to.
And that's for.
And they'll do those in the morning, but both federal and county.
Okay.
And if they can't be handled by Nazara, who's the assistant in McLaughlin, they'll try to do as many of those as they can, but if they have to use a transport team officer, then in that scenario, a third shifter would stay over. They do those at early in the morning, like seven. And that third shifter might pick up a couple hours of overtime and but when they're done with the transport, they go home.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
They don't do a whole shift unless they need to do the whole shift. A ship, a trip up to Northern Vermont could take all day.
Or they walk back into the facility and there's something major going on and say, can I have your, I mean, it would divert from the transport.
Yeah, if we needed.
Yeah. Would, ha- have we thought about, I I know this is, I know we've talked about it before, but the methadone in-house? I know that Rockingham now has a program that they're they're doing, but is that something that you've considered and looked at it?
It goes there by us or in like.
That would be the, that would be the research to try to find out what that would mean.
I haven't looked at it in a while. Um, it's a, it's a bear in terms of jumping through the certification hoops. You have to become a certified.
And and when you look at, when you look at the the amount of money that you get paid to administer it, it's really about the numbers. The method of clinic makes money as much money to people throw every day at whatever it is, eleven or fourteen bucks a pop.
It's up to twenty or something per dose now.
So if you look at an annual salary of somebody, um, you break it down to the unit revenue and you you've gotta have the numbers. So those methadone clinics will get, if you know, a lot, a lot there. So their long is high enough so that for a twenty-dollar administration fee, um, they can actually make some money.
The risk of of transportation outweighed the, I I know, I'm just, you know, you know, because you're you're taking federal inmates, you're taking local inmates and it seems like it's growing that that.
It's not growing. It's out of, if anything, the number of inmates with opioid use disorder is declining a little bit. They're using other, the trend is shifting a little bit away from the the peak. So I believe we're averaging about thirty-five inmates on one form or other of M A T or M O U D. We were up close to, we were in the high forties about two years ago, eighteen months or about. And the number on methadone out of, let's say, thirty-five, it would maybe be four or five. Okay, the challenge is when they come in, you've gotta keep them on methadone. And you gotta get them there quickly before they go into withdrawal. And so that's a separate trip. And then once we get them lined up on the same schedule, that's the goal. You have five inmates that are here two weeks or longer. They'll get them lined up for the same dosing schedule and they'll take them all together in one trip. But that takes a little while uh over to Swansea, Keen Keen Metro. New Seasons, I think, is their main company, but locally known as Keen Metro. So the numbers aren't like um Rockingham has or Merrimack, whoever's, Rockingham's doing their own, I think. They may probably have twenty inmates on methadone. And they did go through that federal certification process. So, um, unless there's more on that, I guess, um, just to to mention nursing, um, it's it's staffing is pretty stable. We only still have two regular full-time nurses plus Becca. But our use of per diems is um basically working pretty well. We at one point needed two traveling nurses. It's been over a year, maybe even longer since we needed to bring in a second traveler. It'd be nice to add another full-time nurse, but you know, we're managing, it's going pretty well. A couple observations for you, in my opinion and data. The referral bonus is an effective tool, continues to be, I think, of last year's two thousand twenty-three officer hires, I think it was fourteen of them came from self-referrals. And this year, so far of the applicants, three of them were referred by other staff. In my view, Manadok radio broadcasting isn't doing a thing for us. And I've been asking Major Hall to try to explicitly check, how'd you hear about us and ask? And there's been zero confirmed applicants where it'd say, said, oh, yeah, I heard that radio spot or I got a text on my phone or whatever, just sharing my.
Are we, are we?
I don't know.
Well, we stopped the add-on of and and because it was, we added on, that was that signal.
Yeah, okay.
We're all, whereas it may not be effective there, what we found, and Kim can always chime in, but is that um on that nursing home level, it actually, you know, we do have people that say that that's how they heard about it. So it depends on the situation. And I think it makes more sense because that referral base for DOC would be, would make sense because it's a profession that's a little bit more specialty type, you know, for the most part. Am I wrong, Kim?
No, I would agree completely. And um having met with Joanna last week and pulled back on the DOC um and swapped it out for, um, I think now we're doing the longevity ads, like the ones that Cheryl recorded and Caleb recorded just to um promote the longevity that we have here in the county along with the benefit package. Um, but I I do agree, most of our, recently, most of our hires at the DOC have come through word of mouth.
Next topic, I just wanna talk about the national.
Back to medical for a second.
Yeah.
How's your physician, nurse practitioner?
I'm gonna actually talk about that in a bit.
Okay.
One, one, one time. So just, I've mentioned this, um, we we chose about a year ago to start a voluntary process trying to get accredited through the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. Um, we've been plugging away at it, brief review, they did a two-day site visit back in early October. We didn't reach the level of accreditation we actually never expected to. We knew there'd be things we'd need to work on. Most of those things are behind the scenes, like policy development or demonstrating through meeting minutes, your compliance with certain standards. Um, there've been a few things that we've adjusted along the way, like some updates to our medical and mental health screening, initial questions um that are asked by officers to flag, you know, higher-risk cases, some change to our suicide observation policy. We have a formal medical service staff meeting monthly where we're minutes being kept. And we have a quarterly meeting with medical and administrative staff. Um, those are examples of things that are bringing us into compliance. There's a follow-up visit July tenth and eleventh. We'll see how we do. Um, whole project's been free, no cost. As I said before, if at any point we decide we can't do this, we hit an obstacle, most likely if we did, it would be financial, then we can stop and say, you know what? We learned a lot. We got a lot of really good feedback about good healthcare standards and it gives me and the medical staff confidence that what we're doing here to manage the needs of challenging inmate population is best practice stuff.
I can't imagine if we achieved certification, we'd ever abandon that.
No, I don't think we've abandoned it. Um, it's, um, yeah, and it wouldn't be that hard to maintain it presumably.
It's the climb to get there, just like if the ambulance accreditation.
Yeah.
Yes. Which would be a great thing if we.
Yeah, it's a process.
Yeah.
We need the second one to say that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think AMR has it.
Third, Stewards, AMR, that'd be a great.
Yeah, it's, it's a very long process. I've gone through the recertifications of the companies and it it takes a while.
I got the manual.
Yeah, I get it under time, Chris. Yesterday's a fine example.
I got the presentation manual a couple of years ago. Everybody said, please, slow down, they invited it done.
Uh, to turn a little bit to the model and staffing um of of medical services, um, I wanted to talk about it, a couple of reasons. PA Segal is approaching retirement, although I've been saying that for a long time, maybe he never will retire. But I believe that it's about a year away and some feedback from National Commission, which was that using a PA, the amount of com- complex psychiatric and mental health meds that we're prescribing and managing, they, it's not a set standard. We're within compliance with this model where our mental health clinician does a lot of the assessments and diagnosis and tracks and monitors med compliance and side effects and Dave comes in twice a week, works very closely with her, sees the certain inmates he needs to see that are more com- complex. Um, they uh said it's a little outdated and that it'd be preferable to have more psychiatric expertise here, um, even though it's not out of compliance. So I'm looking ahead at, you know, um, planning for Dave. There there is an APRN that worked at Cheshire Medical um, who has some possible interest in some part-time work. I'm gonna look at that in terms of next year's budget and I also need to check back with Dave to see if anything's changing on his plan. But the model that we do basically went all the way back to Barnes-Petersen, twenty-plus years of Dave, he's been here even longer. And that's pretty much the same model that that we do now.
Is there a standard of medical coverage by number of hours for population?
There isn't a a black and white number, like if your facility is every hundred people, you need a certain if they, which is good if they don't micromanage it. And I think they were okay with his onsite hours and availability by phone, which is around six to eight hours a week, you know.
And does the care that we require extend beyond initial assessment and and normal treatment for medical or psychiatric issues? Administration of medication and follow-up? Are there more acute issues that present themselves combined with?
Yeah, by phone consultation at times. Um, and he's as available as he can be for that, depending on timing. Yes, they've got an acute situation on a Wednesday and he just missed being in on Tuesday and he's not coming back till Friday. Although he he does sometimes come in, for example, to stitch an inmate up if there was a fight, a laceration, save us a trip to the hospital. Sometimes he'll come in off schedule.
Do we have any cell out there?
No, I don't think he's that interested or it's.
Well, not in any institution, we know some ED or Lebanon or something.
Um, I don't know, but I could see the need to possibly explore that when Dave leaves or that that could come on the table as something like necessary.
Well, I wonder if it helps in terms of accreditation to at least appear structurally expanded skill and the resources to deliver healthcare and critical settings, but.
Yeah. Uh, he comes every Wednesday morning, probably one to two hours on site. The medical, the medical acuity, um, it's the medical acuity is a big issue. Uh, if you remember, we raised the budget, we had exceeded the budget quite a bit last year. We're within budget, but just to give you an example, in all of two thousand twenty-three, we had seventeen unscheduled transports for medical reasons. This year through, we had one yesterday, so we're now at twenty-four through just five months, right? Yeah, five months. Um, nineteen county, four federal. That's typical. The county inmates come in, they're in bad shape, right? The federal inmates, thank God, um, are always coming from another facility, almost always. So they're not, haven't been out on the streets, uh, using, neglecting their healthcare as so often happens. So that's the mix and um.
There you can see, you can see the counties is the higher transport level by far.
Yeah, for the unscheduled transports, but by far, and that's the reason and um. Yeah, fortunately, I've I've exercised my authority under a statute of six twenty-three colon one that a little bit questionable if I'd get pushback, but I can administratively transfer an inmate to uh under who's experiencing illness or emergency, like healthcare emergency, to another setting and do it without the court's consent, even for a pre-trial inmate. I'd have to notify the court. They could then review that case. But if an inmate gets stuck up at the hospital overnight, um, county inmates is the only category I can do this for. Um, and they're projecting, sometimes a couple of times, we've had a projection of five to as much as five-day to two-week length of stay. Um, we can pull our staff out. We, every time I've done it, I've put the inmate on the bracelet. As a precaution and to um. Hopefully ameliorate concerns that might come from the court. And. If they are ready to be discharged and the court doesn't bail them or change their status, in the meantime, we'll go get them. And that's happened um four or five times this year already, whereas last year, I think I only did that one.
There's additional medical pushback at all?
There's one nurse that gets a little ornery.
About about what? About the presence of?
Just well, like where's? I don't know, like the the inmates, like a difficult um. Psychologically, interpersonally complaining and. Um, when our officers are there. They act as a buffer for that, deal with them and kind of contain that sort of behavior. As a medical issue, it doesn't change, our officers don't do anything there, but I think. They like the, she likes the babysitting function. And when we're not there, now they're more exposed to that inmates.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, and and it's a small percentage of the psychiatric admissions, just the E D, which I guess typically run around sixteen percent of that. Of all of the. Entries into the E D and they don't like them, they'd never like them and and frankly. Um, I never have felt that. We emergency round staff get added with training either at the security.
Yeah.
Officer level, staff level, you know, psychiatric, emergency, kind of chronic issue predictives.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna. The SIM prod sequential intercept mapping that's coming up and you're you're doing a brief kickoff.
Yeah.
Looking, I delicately broaching that topic, I I think um. Cheshire's never wanted anything really to do with psychiatric care since they closed their unit and um. A substance use addiction as well, I think it's been like. Um, and the doorway is under them and I. I don't want to get off track, including that my daughter works there, but it's not being. Properly supported and it's their opportunity, if they don't want to deal with them in the E D. Then properly fund and support the doorway, put the administration in there that it needs. And let it be an off-site buffer for you and and it'll work, but um. I'm a little bit off track here and it'll be interesting to talk about.
But it all ties together.
It does all tie together because. Uh, it has been that way for decades and and I I've always. Failed to understand why, why it it's not a priority. For. Hospital. I don't understand.
It's pay me now, pay me later, if you don't invest in it.
We have, you know. Uh, twenty to twenty-five percent either have mental illness or substance abuse or dementia. And actually, it's probably more like thirty-five percent. Forty percent, uh, and you don't develop the internal training and support systems to manage it, then you're basically. Saying you don't care about forty percent of the people who come into the E D. Uh, and then you look at the the wait times in there, either through just the normal delay in E D or. Bed issues or other things.
Yeah.
I I don't understand it, I've never understood it, I've never understood it. Uh, why such a significant percentage of a problem. Doesn't get addressed more intrinsically from training and support.
In a word, I don't, maybe that's not, that's a part, that's part of it. Uh, just brief some capital updates that you might be interested in. The body scanner has been delivered and installed. We're about to start training on that next week. Start using it within a couple of weeks.
We'll be able to see that for today?
Yeah, you can go to the booking area and take a look at it.
Okay.
Very pretty, nice. And the inmates are, the inmates are already reacting to it and the word's kind of out. Oh, they've got a scanner now. We're hoping that a certain. Benefit is pre- preventative, right? The drug introduction.
Their their concern is that they'll be. More effectively frustrated from smuggling.
Well, yeah, they'll be. Less likely to pack their bags, as we say.
We were just talking about that this morning, was that inmates that. You've had three that you've had to rotate around because they were all involved in the same thing, it can't be the same place, but. It seems like this is the place where. Lawyers want to meet, so they rotate the people around when they want to meet with a certain people. And they said that, yeah, but one of them is a is is a packer. You know, that he, and so I said, well, that machine then will. Actually alter that, that thinking a little bit. So, yeah.
You get help with your abdominal pain calls. You'll be able to see whether it's a packer or gas. All the.
Yeah.
The blockages.
Yeah, we've had some of that. It can be dangerous if they swallow, if they swallow it. We haven't, we haven't.
Can't chew too much. Yeah, yeah.
The driveway and sidewalk project is scheduled for tentatively. June seventeenth, Lazlo's on vacation next week, but. Right after he gets back, that should be happening.
And who's doing that work?
Uh, Gus. Yeah, Gus L- Larendo.
American, all all state, all state.
Well, they provide the penny material, they're providing the labor equipment.
He's there taking care of everything, right?
Um. And uh, our jail management system, which goes end of life. At the end of next year, we were, we've already um contracted with Beacon. And it's tentatively scheduled for conversion and changing over in the in the fall to the new. Jail management system. And we'll, we'll exit the contract, that part of the contract would secure us at that point. And stop paying them the maintenance fees, which are about twenty-five thousand a year. And we'll have maintenance fees under the new contract, but those are included initially in. Two years, if you remember, Cheryl, but.
And is that a big lift for I T? For that transition?
Um. Yeah, some of it is that they definitely need to be involved with access to our servers. Rob wants to. Open that window um only when we're aware for brief periods of time.
Right.
Let them pull the data. We'll be running a test server for a while before we go live. Um, I T certainly needs to be in that that loop um. Yeah, it's been a shared process with Rob and I in from the beginning of picking the vendor, making sure it met his. Needs for security and that our needs for. Software functionality. And that's, that's all I got. Unless anybody has any. Other topics or questions?
Does Keating? Fire. Risk on for your ammo transport.
Yeah.
I saw King Fire.
Yeah, I don't know why they were here, actually.
Yeah.
I didn't hear. It was some preventative. Yeah, maybe, um. So, uh. The tour and interviews. Tell me when you're ready, I'll check in.
Yeah.
We will have Captain Cozyara take you wherever you'd like to see. Sounds like you want to see booking and look at the scanner.
Yeah.
Um, you can interview as many as you want, but we've got two or three inmates. That potentially on standby, two or three staff. Uh, Thompson is on vacation, Major Thompson, so um Patrick Kelly is the officer in charge today. And he may be helping with the logistics of getting inmates to wherever you want them. There is a um. Some lawyers meeting with the federal inmate back in the computer room, which you probably haven't even been in in a while. You probably don't need to see it, but that they don't want to be interrupted, so other than that, you can go on. Yeah, now, now you're gonna want to see it. We call it the computer.
This is our facility.
I don't even know where that is.
Yeah, uh-huh, so if you're facing the control room from the hallway, there's a door right to the left of it.
Yeah.
And there's a few things back there. There's a change-out room, there's a contact visit room that we hardly ever use. And there's this. Room in the middle with no windows that used to have computers. Yeah, well, no, not, well, maybe, I don't.
Well, right behind was plenty of them.
Um. I don't think it's being used at all for computers anymore. Sometimes we, we use it for.
Well, I thought that behind control where the service used to be was where they got damaged and.
Yeah, that's a little, that's, it's more to the left of control, the server room you're thinking of is. But between control and the and the lobby.
Right.
Yeah, um, this is like hardware, the computers that.
We will raid, we'll raid the room.
Yeah, storm in there. Yeah.
And how, how long do we want? We're the Tories or? It's our toll. Okay, great. Yeah, perfect. Uh, we can work, we can. Work it out one way or the other.
Doug, before you leave, I did do a a cost, a meal cost for twenty twenty-three. And um if I looked at the average run census of in-house inmates and then I added about. Fifteen meals, three times a day for your staff.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah.
The, I was, if I just compared it to food cost, it's a dollar sixty-six a meal. If I then. A- actually increased. The inmate to one and a half meals, because I feel like it, there was some thing that used to suggest the inmates aid got served about one and a half times. That brings the food cost down to a dollar sixteen per meal. Um, but then if I add labor and kitchen supplies, because those are the two other um um.
Main.
Items that go in. That brings the, the meal cost up to four seventy-three. Per meal, again, if I increase that by one and a half times for the inmate meals, it comes to three dollars and thirty cents per meal.
So. If you add in the commissioner's breakfast, it's five dollars and sixty cents.
I, I knew we doubled the budget. Well, yeah, I guess the, well, it's interesting because it used to be, we did the one and a half. Um, because we sent more food down to the jail from Maplewood than a residency. Whether that's still true, I don't know.
Right.
So you did three meals a day for the inmates, but then you did a one and a half on top of that?
As a comparison, because there used to be some common or or.
The serving size.
Serving size of what the inmates would get would be about one and a half, would be equivalent to about a one and a half meal. But I don't know if that's true or not anymore, that they.
I don't, I never heard that.
Well.
This is a long time ago.
If we have that out of the factor, it's a dollar sixty-six food cost, flat food cost. Um, and or four dollars and seventy-three cents if you include labor. Um, the kitchen supplies.
I don't, I don't think we need to use the one bring fire multiplier anymore.
Yes, yeah, so it's a one sixty-six food, four seventy-three labor and.
That's lower than.
And and that would make sense, because remember, we used to do, we used to book revenue to Maplewood out of the jail and so. Anyway.
Yeah.
And just real quickly, next time that we are up here, could we hear more about the peer mentoring program?
Peer support.
Peer support?
Yes.
Yeah, the individual that came to the D E I program was very excited to talk about it.
Yeah. Yeah, Sergeant Mattson, he's the peer support leader. Uh, yeah, I'd love to talk about it. Um, it's been really, it's been a really good thing. It started with Eli and. Sherrons and I'm not sure if it's caught on there, but we've. Yeah, managed to maintain it and um. Yeah, in the interest of time, I'll.
Yeah.
I don't, I, yeah, I could talk a lot about it, but I can't, I know you're on.
Well, that's why I said next time, yeah, just, you know, that would be great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And you, I'm just sending this to me when you have a chance.
I will.
Great, thank you. The uh, next on the thing, because if I don't, you know, Cheryl will give me the stare, it only takes a second, um. Is the master agenda item number one-one-eight-two, the D R A M S S dash four-six form signing? Cheryl expect, expected to have the commission sign the Department of Revenue M S forty-six form, which we do on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
But for those listening in or may, that may listen in, can you just quickly explain what they're signing?
This is basically the presentation uh on the D R A, the Department of Revenue Administration's. Form that presents the commissioner's proposed budget that got proposed back in December. It's, there is certain, until, there's just certain forms that have to go in. And the next one that we have to do is the M S forty-two, which is the delegation approved budget, um, but. Now that it's all electronic, you can't do one until the other's done. All I want you to do is sign, I will fill in your names and. Um. And.
And we can do this without Terry's.
I, as far as I'm aware, it's still just a majority. If they kick it back and I'll get to it.
Don't you put it up there as well?
Is he in Puerto Rico?
Uh, I think so, is that where he wants to stand on?
Puerto Rico. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, um. Next up is the master agenda item one-one-eight-three, emergency management director job description. Uh, I am expected to have the commission review the draft job description for potential emergency management director.
He used to operate about here.
Okay. Um. We got you guys, we're here. Um, so as you know, I I mean legally, we'll probably have to wait for a second for him to come back, but. Just, you know, we started talking about this last week and um a- as a reminder. As a reminder, it is um. Something that actually, as we dug into trying to figure out the funding for Southwest uh Fire Mutual Aid. Um. We realized there is a stat given there that on some levels that the county should have a um. Emergency management director. Um, I I want to make sure that, and I think this came out of a brick grant more than anything else. We applied for a Homeland Security brick grant through FEMA. And one of the, the, we were given a no, but it was what we consider a soft no. Um, that they said we don't have a county emergency mitigation plan, as a just mitigation plan. And we don't have a direct, a director of merchant, emergency management for the county. Well, you know, so we can't apply for this grant. I want to make it very clear to anybody that listens in, this is not for us to take a step towards controlling something, because each town has their own. Situation, but what this does do and what we've been allowed to do is um work with Southwest um regional. Southwest Regional Planning Commission um to. See what towns have mitigation plans, what towns need updating, what towns don't have them. So that we can take all those plans and that's the county plan. So we're not altering anybody's plan, what we are going to do is get them all updated. So that we have oversight there, but the job description for you, and I've gone through it, and it's pretty much exactly what I've said is, it is. It's a coordination, it's a support. But I did hear an interesting comment the other day. And it's something that the chief should hear too, and Eli should hear. And it was, uh, when I was talking to this with with somebody the other day about this. They're like, if you have a key to the chief as the director and all crazy goes, they're in the midst of the crazy. So how do they, you know, like, how do they manage an emergency oversight if they're having to oversee their troops? At the same time. And I, like, you know, so that that's like conversation. I don't want to get off topic, but that's something that we would have to address. But this is the draft before you, I just gave an outline of why we're. But this is the draft before you, I just gave an outline of why we're here now, we're historical, which you're aware of. So you wanna go through it all?
Just to answer your question, that very question will be answered in an emergency operations plan in terms of how responsibilities are delegated, how these command system is implemented, but this is the reality, it's true issue, so. Um, and one of the things for folks listening, you mentioned the brick rant, that's a FEMA grant called the building with the city infrastructure and communities grant for, so that's what. Say that again, please. Building resilient infrastructure and communities. B R I C, right, that's that's what that acronym is.
Yeah. And and my theory is is that we, we're gonna put as many hooks in the water to land the funding we need for Southwest Fire Mutual Aid. And right now, we've got probably about three or four books in. And uh this would, this going back to this someday could be the fifth or sixth, and because no other borders is out there too. But you know, to get this accomplished, we're gonna try to see where we can get money from anywhere. Because I believe that if we do get any level congressional spending request, it's probably not gonna be the what we requested, but it may be a million. And if we get anything from the other monies that are left over for the state, probably won't be what we requested, but it'll be something. So we're gonna have to continue to build towards the ultimate funding.
Okay, um, the basis for this is actually based in statute uh under RSA twenty one P, which was updated after nine eleven. All counties, towns, and cities are required to have an emergency management function, emergency management capability. So um this actually responds to that, and as Chris said, it's really designed to be uh create a support system for municipalities and Sheshaw County. And as you read through this, it's written in that fashion. Um, the primary focus is on planning and coordination in terms of identifying uh what the county should have for emergency operations and having mitigation plans, have a competency of operations plan. Uh, the ability to conduct risk assessments, threat assessments. And then organize and conduct drills and exercises that would test the county's capabilities to respond to mitigating events. Um, when it comes to response and recovery, it is solely an advisory role. Nothing written to this job description that would give the county emergency management director the authority, A, over any county agencies, whether it's EMS or the sheriff's department or uh finance or any other department. Um, and nor would it have he or she have authority over any municipal organization. So all those powers are still vested in the local emergency manager director, the fire chief, police chief, the boards of selectmen, city council, whoever. Uh, but again, it's providing that coordination because as you know, disasters don't recognize municipal boundaries. That um and threats and hazards don't recognize municipal boundaries. So there truly is a need to try and help coordinate particularly the smaller towns that don't have the full-time resources to A, seek grants, write plans, stay on track with what's available out there and what their ultimate responsibilities are, or uh have, it would also provide potential assistance during an actual event. Then from a support standpoint. So I basically summarized what we felt out. Um, there's also mentioned here about making sure this individual establishes and maintains relationships with state and local entities, not just the governmental entities. In when it comes to breaks management, the private sector, both the oil product private sector and the nonprofit community really plays a huge role, and that's a lot of what the city is doing, doing this coordination, so that makes sure that those um nonprofit and private, private sector resources and capabilities are made available to uh response organizations in the county, both for response to public. You think about um, you know, water, you think about the hospital capabilities, you think about uh construction capabilities, we think about uh just building supplies. Having all those things in a plan and those resources available is is real equitable. Uh, we're suggesting, um, since this would be a part-time position, we really don't know what the pool of interest out there would be, whether this would be someone who's already a county employee, whether it's going to be someone uh that is not affiliated with government right now. Whether it be one of the uh fire chiefs or police chiefs in the county that might have an interest in this. Um, so the education requirements are rather um general, associate degree, bachelor degree. You know, wide range of uh areas of expertise, and same with experience, suggesting a minimum of five years' experience in emergency management, public safety, environmental science, municipal planning, or any field. Then of course, group experience in project management, consensus building, and problem solving. And one of the, you might be surprised to see environmental scientists here, but when you think about it, um most disasters and hazard mitigation issues are related to the environment because of climate change. So that's an area of expertise that increasingly emergency managers are calling town for assistance. And that's what you need to, when you're doing your planning, so it wouldn't hurt to have someone with that skill or capability, shouldn't close their eyes to it. So, happy to answer your questions.
The only, the only question I had, I guess it comes back to authority and other sort of, you know, soft sort of things. Is 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 the term director to to block it as opposed to the other county emergency management officer?
Either major coordinator, you have the title of the day, and you could, you could actually vest the title of director in your capital administrator for this overall oversight. And then have this coordinator be the person that's really doing it. This is kind of what.
You think of the authority and the control, that sort of thing, a director just seem to be a bit of a upward reach.
From a public-facing perspective, yeah, given the issues that you've already dealt with. It might be a better sell.
And what do we envision the the number of hours this person's gonna have to give us um?
Well, I, if I had to guess, I'd say initially you got some ramp up to kind of get your head around all of this to uh create some sort of matrix that understands what is the communities have, where they get, might be what will we might have. So I I would think that that's a fairly robust effort, but then while you get up and cruising, I don't know.
I also think that it's initially you're working with uh Southwest Regional Planning Commission as the contact person from the county to work with, identifying all the the plans that are out there. And 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 in doing so, introducing the role when they're working with town, so they get to know that.
Well, certainly in terms of the H M P in hazard mitigation, but
Yeah.
I mean, emergency operations and continuity.
You've got nothing now.
Yeah.
You don't wanna set your sights on too high an expectation that this person's gonna gonna come in charge and solve all these problems of the year. They take these things one one step at a time. So, I mean, you could do it ten hours a week, twenty hours a week. I'm sure you could fill it out as a, somebody could find enough to do for full-time, but um.
Well, right now, we get seven thousand dollars.
Budget is seven thousand dollars, that's what you pay.
Yeah.
So when you pay, there's a stipend.
Yeah.
And they work within that, you know, they set their hours and work within that stipend.
Yeah.
I think most, well, my, most municipalities, not cities, it's stipend.
Yeah.
And it's some retired guy that has worked his experience.
Like Jack when he becomes the treasurer.
Right, something like that, but not. I'll be far too busy as forever.
Even the city of Keen.
Seventy-five million dollars, Jack. I can feel my rotator coming around, repetitive motion.
I was gonna say, Doug, you wanna add another title to your?
But even the city of Keen, they don't have a director for, I mean, they have a director. But but it, but for a long time, it was Court Blunt West, who was a public worker.
It it's always been. But that's embedded in their salaries.
Right, that's right, but it's, but it's a, it's like in a, and it's like when you're, when you're, you become an assistant um, city manager, there's a bump up there too.
Right.
My knowledge nationally, the only community that has is a separate agency.
Yeah.
So I think we need to start with the stipend.
Yeah, and see how it evolves.
Try to find a couple of retired guys.
But and you know, the question to me was, I mean, am I wrong to say that in those moment, I mean, right now, this is, it's more of a somebody we need. I mean, it being totally honest here, it's 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 being getting to a point where we can go after a grant to get some money. I mean, I mean, that's why, that's the primary thing.
Right.
That's the, you know, and had we not gone down that road, had we not reached out to Southwest Mutual Aid, then we wouldn't even probably know about this at this point, because no other county knows about it or has it.
I mean, you probably farm out to a consultant like Southwest, your emergency operations plan, your hazard mitigation plan, your current operation plan with funding from
Yeah.
FEMA to the state here.
Right.
That's how that works.
Right.
Again, back to, this person is not gonna be sitting in office.
No.
Why aren't we writing plans?
Right, no.
It's reviewing and gathering and
Yeah.
The the biggest thing is that collaboration and um, forget how you worded it on um. It's basically coordinating what people are already doing or what entities are already doing. And bringing it under the umbrella that I spoke about at the last commissioner's meeting about this of it's, we're not taking over, like you said, Chris, it's, we're coordinating so that the entire county can become more resilient and mitigate any hazards that don't care about boundaries or town lines. It's how do we stay and make our, or how do we stay ahead of it as best possible, respond to it and recover from it for our citizens.
Yeah.
You know, everybody worries about coastal storms. Do with historically, the impact of hurricanes that have made that left turn, connected with the valley. Dollar loss, but much higher than.
As long as they go to Vermont.
Yeah. That's kind of good, uh, because, you know, it contains it into this, into the valley, so the impact is far more tremendous.
What if we have a retired person doing it?
I'm not sure.
And and there were to be a major disaster, would that person become the local commander?
No.
Executive?
No. No, each each town has some level of of, you know, um, of organization, of 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 person that's gonna oversee that.
This person could be available for some technical assistance.
Yeah.
Coordination, and particularly around helping the county agencies. So as Chris mentioned, the sheriff and the EMS director are going to be very, very busy. This individual could be helping with sheriff, what do you need? I'll get all the state, I'll get all the people. Um, director, what do you, chief, what do you need? Um, that sort of thing, and be in a liaison with you guys in terms of what's going on.
I mean, I suppose that said, on the incident management system, you could decide who's gonna be in charge at a particular time, right? And you know, if it's a long duration, twenty-four hours, you might rotate people's role anyway.
You're gonna have to, and it always falls under unified command, so you're gonna have myself, the sheriff, fire representatives or other town representatives, finance, the administrator, commissioners, elected officials are all gonna be in that emergency operations center under a unified command. There will only be one incident commander. But we're all there to be our subject matter experts. Say, yes, this is what my crews are telling me in real time that we need in the moment or moving forward. So it's, this position is really coordinating and supporting. It's coordinating before the event and supporting during the event.
There's no intent here to read any kind of a command structure.
No.
Read a county or job or a center, anything.
So I think it's a, to be managed officer.
That's fine.
To to me, coordinated now should go to every community woman. I don't need your help coordinating. But yeah, it's all about the politics and the ego, and the ego, huh?
I wanna take bite out of, oh, maybe, I know, I I I, you know, whatever we can do
Yeah.
to make it a soft landing, because for the fourth time, if this allows me to go after some monies that I can go after, at the end of the day, it's a win for us. And it's not to be the only the last time, and it could be that we're doing it in partnership with other towns that may need something, and we've now opened that door because we've done everything they they've required us to do. I mean, we could go after maybe other FEMA brick grants for other communities out there and partner with those communities.
Right, so so but for that small change, uh, I think we should go to authorized.
I don't know if the term, what is the term of the ministry? I'm trying to think of a really, really simple, the officer still has that.
Yeah.
Kind of military law enforcement kind of.
Coordinating.
Well, coordinator.
About specialists.
Specialists.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, special.
I like that.
Yeah.
I was gonna say liaison, but specialist is way better.
Hey, no, I won't be doing the tour, I'm taking the rest of the day. Yeah.
Maybe you don't have some bits on my type.
Right.
Right, right.
So, and the other thing is, and I want to chief you to hear.
So you do need a.
Yeah, well, you can say you're most, most, yes.
Yes.
Second.
All right. Um, and 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 uh Davis and I will make sure that that it's outlined exactly the motion. From what you had said earlier.
And we put the money in the budget, it's actually kind of a delegation that it came up at executive period, and you know.
We did. We did.
Okay.
Yeah, we told them exactly why, we told them the reason we're doing it at that point too.
Okay.
All right, um, the only other thing for why Don's here um is the um Don has sent me, and I'll send it to you, um, this strategic plan timeline.
Mm-hmm.
And I I had a chance to look at it, and I think it makes a lot of sense on really, I think it's important that for a multitude of reasons that we go through this strategic plan.
Yes.
And that we have something in place that we can say that we have done, but more importantly than we have, real sore values that come out of this, a real mission. Or into, taking a, taking a look at everything, you know, but there are some team membership on there that you need to look to see if that makes sense for you. Um, and but pretty much, I think it's a a good process to start, you know, with a timeline that you and Don and would would start to work out.
You notice if you put somebody there as as your delegate, your representative, I don't know if you would think that might be.
Yeah. Yeah. Do it. Yeah. So that's something that we're gonna be working on to, like, we've been working on quietly and slowly, and we're to to that point, so. And then last thing, just a quick update, uh, we were able to get on all um, with the Homeland Security Director Buxton, when we went up and saw him, we put together a package that we were able to send out to him. So he now has all the numbers and any and the narrative behind it, so that he can advocate for us on the state level, um, if there is some aqua funding left over, my my inside people are saying that there's, they're projecting five to ten, but that some people are saying that probably will be um ten to twenty million aqua monies left over, and that there there there's monies that they buy by by December. Yeah, by the, by December this year, they have to have it appropriated.
Yeah.
Or designated, and so by twenty twenty-six, that has to be in process of of work being completed. Yeah, and so.
You spend internally on state uh uh big loops, things, they have to give it somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, they can spend on state projects.
They can, but.
They're scraping back money that has been held by towns, cities, or state agencies, that's kind of passed out there. Unattached to.
So we're, you know, so we're hoping that we can be in that mix. At the same time, we sent the same package with a little bit different um email to uh Chase Pagman. If you remember, Chase was the deputy director of Gopher. Um, he's now at uh B E A, um, business economic. Um, affairs, affairs, thank you, yeah. And and um.
Is that the old grand?
Yes. Yeah. And and so he's over there now, and I had reached out to him oh, probably about a month and a half ago, and about two, two, three weeks ago. Also, I get this call and it's Chris, Chase, and I'm like, hey, Chase, and it's like, I apologize, I've been doing da, 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 da. No worries, and he's like, no, but when I hear a project from Sheshaw County, I wanna know more about it, so tell me. So I explained, because if you remember Chase, when the fifty million came out for the nursing homes, we didn't qualify because of the language. We asked them to rewrite it so that we could be, and we ended up getting over a million dollars for that. And we ended up getting over a million dollars for that, and then um. Uh we had, we we asked them if we could, if they could have set aside monies for public safety. For the counties, like they did with the communities that was hardly used. And he said they could, and they set aside three point five million, so three hundred fifty million for, uh three hundred fifty thousand for each county. We we put in a a an ask for about one point, I don't know, six, one point seven million. We ended up getting like one point four because a lot of counties didn't use it. So that really was a helpful thing for us, so Chase knows that we're gonna utilize the funding and he's like. Let me see, I mean, I can be an advocate because I'll be on that committee when that, with whatever's left over. He said, I'll probably be heading it up, and then he's also saying, but it also allows me to know what the project is, so if there's other funding that comes along. I'll steer it that way.
Right.
So, so those are out there, um we're waiting to hear from congressional spending, we're trying to get the brick stuff in place. We've got Vermont um being asked for Sanders for one point. I don't know, one point, I know it's one point three total, but I don't think they asked for one point three, I think they asked for more than that. Um but I could be wrong, um and then. And then uh then there's northern borders that we can go after at some point too. And I have a, I have a lunch with Steve Portier, who heads up North Border on Monday. So we're gonna see where that stands.
The challenge has been getting the Vermont side motivated and focused on this. Personally, I think the the ultimate solution will be Cheshire County to annex the state of Vermont, so it was. I make that motion.
Well, you know, and the biggest issue there is that if Sanders does give them money. That money has to go to Vermont's source, it can't go to Southwest Mutual Aid. Uh even though they have the oversight of the of the of the. Yeah.
All right, that's interesting, probably a little division, why, why wouldn't southwestern Mutual Aid register in Vermont?
That's probably the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and it's just a shadow or shell, a mirror.
Yeah, you don't need to have like a festival. Yeah.
Yeah, technically filed a few pieces of paperwork.
And who's heading that up?
Yeah.
Now, well, at least, I mean, I get it, but if that's something we wanna do, we should be probably. All right, so is he working with Joe to get Mutual Aid to do this and get whatever needs he can to register? Okay, good.
Yeah, that would make very big sense, because then it'd become a common ending.
So we've got, like I said, we've got like five layers of things in the, in the, in the five layers of hooks in the pond. And hopefully, hopefully we linked all that we need to cover the funding. I know it's, I've gotten multiple emails from multiple chiefs in Vermont and New Hampshire thanking us for the work we're doing, from Mark Oaten. To some chiefs in Vermont, um and so.
So the question on Mutual Aid's front is. Um when their board is going to. Brace the entire project, build it into their budget or their capital, or something, take the relative, like start good motions. If don't. I mean, if the money comes through, they're gonna have to have some type of appropriation to receive it.
Yeah, right.
And uh. Joe's gonna have to get walked through that.
Oh, we'll be ready.
We're walking with it.
Yeah, we'll go.
I'll be, it's not a strong one. Yeah.
Next week, uh you and I, we do those communications with something. We're gonna sit down with Joe, go through all of the agreements for the power sites, because some of those are distributed to the state, some are private. Operations that have not been updated. We wanna get those all cleaned up and ready so that once something comes through. You know, properly understand, oh wait a minute, I really don't want your power here anymore, or I want you to pay me. Next one dollars, we wanna get this locked down now, so there's no delay, there's a deadline of.
And and just so you know, for the record too, I had talked to Joe too, saying, once everything comes through. Um any costs incurred by the county. Well, you know, we we would have to have some level of compensation on reimbursement. And and he's agreed to that.
Yeah, the.
Because we're, we're doing, we're doing, and I'm not talking to me, I'm talking more what you guys are doing than anybody else.
The idea of the private sites. In terms of the agreement extends. Potentially a little longer because. You know, I've gone through this with the sheriff's private sites, access. Deed rights. Uh succession planning, what happens when those people sell, what happens if they don't like you anymore? What happens if the right of way isn't uh 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 deeded?
Yeah.
And they change their mind or they change their drive away. I mean, it it is a little more, it's a little more complex than it's been in the past, because a lot of these are just literally unanswered.
And and. You've been, you woke up asleep and sleeping there in that all these people that have this thing on their property, they've been getting maybe in a year's time. A thousand dollars, and all of a sudden, it's like, well, wait a second, now I'd like. This, and that's a whole shift, and that's something we've had to deal with that has slowed down our process. It's not, we've worked through all of it and it's, and we've had great success, but it's been, you know, all of a sudden, these people, there's a lot of these people, it's either generational. And so these kids are like, wow, or it's, I don't know, that was under, this is, I own the property now. Even even towns.
Twenty-five years ago, the idea of towers and communication, cell phones and all of that stuff wasn't just.
Yeah.
Lost and 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 in integral to everything we do, and so. There there is value there, and it's different value now than I was talking about.
Yeah.
You've got multiple challenges with other towers. Site, Capitol area lost a tower, puzzled hill because the eighteen tower fell over, hit the guy who was for the, the cabinet tower. Brought that down, and they're still going back to the responsible, restoring services to run for.
Yeah. And the other thing about the private towers is identifying the location on the tower based on the elevations and the photography. To make sure that in ten years, you still have the same.
So he did it on his own, was the deputy director and I was one, managed all of the tower sites in the state, so he is. He is the guy that knows the incident happens, all of his issues.
And that's why when we went back in and did the numbers and I got a little bit of a sticker shock, I had to work through it and had to lay on the couch and Don had to talk me through it a little bit.
On the rooftop, prepared to jump off and then come down.
But it's a legitimate commercial interest.
Yeah. All right, it was too long. But um, all right, so we're good, um anything else you got, and otherwise, and then we've got a non-public and um and a few other things, and then we're done. So the non-public won't take long, it's more of making you aware of the situation than anything else.
Okay.
So. Yeah, next thing, Kim. So non, uh it's a non-public proceeding to R S A ninety-one eighty-three to dismissal promotion and compensation any public employee for disciplining such employee. When the investigation charges against him or unless employee affected has a right to a public meeting or threats. So that's what we need of motion to go to the non-public.
So, sorry.
All right, Commissioner Wasma, Commissioner England, all right. We need to uh minutes uh.
Well, as a result of deliberation, a non-public session, no vote was taken, and no decision made.
Thank you. All right, and second. Yeah, I, I, so we're good.
Jason, you need me for anything else?
Uh song and dance?
No.
Okay.
Your Disney dance.
All right, thank you. All right, yeah, yeah, we're good, um the only thing I have out of this is um. Real quickly, um when we come back for our next meeting, which is on the twenty-sixth, actually, because the nineteenth is uh June ten, Juneteenth.
Oh, great.
And we're away next week, so on the twenty-sixth, I would like to talk to you and Cheryl would like to talk to you about procurement. And um you know, that the level's up at ten thousand dollars for um, what is it, Cheryl, the uh?
The bidding.
Bidding. Um is there guidelines that we wanna put into place, some level of policy we wanna put in place with department heads? Understand that you still want to see certain things below that, or we want to have a discussion, we don't get at that point, just about what we're, what your thoughts are about this.
Well, I don't. Well, my sense would be, we. We go through the same process that we've always done, that the department head. Uh advances to us because my budget to do a certain thing is priced it out, made a logical decision. And yeah, based on reasonable stuff and and then we. But if there's, the difference is, we're not hampered by a policy requirement for a certain number of bids. Or to take. Well, I suppose we still have to take the lowest reasonable bid, we do that anyway, and let's say the lowest bid, lowest reasonable bid.
Right, but but the the other thing is, well, at least is that if there is a project now that comes in at five or six thousand, you wanna be made aware of it. Not that you're going to say yea or nay to it, but that you would wanna have the department head come for, I mean, these are.
One might even further question is, do you feel like there's, ten thousand is just the limit now that we need to. Um start to get, get the competitive bids, or do you feel the, there should be still some level of. The department heads get, trying to at least get some underlying. Bids, just so that they're not just saying, oh, now I don't have to deal with anything under ten thousand, and it's like, what is that threshold?
I think that from a transparency and public policy point of view, that we should go through the same process, make sure this is a regular, we're spending wires turning in. So.
For anything over ten thousand now, or that's what I'm just.
I mean, even though it's fear, do you want to be made aware of this?
Because I, it's just, I mean. There's the potential that, you know, we could find that people just, you know, say, oh, I good, I don't have to, you know, search around for anything under ten thousand. And you could have actually gotten something for three thousand versus seven thousand, I I don't know, it's, it's just.
It's ten thousand.
Five thousand, so it was five.
Is that a statute or?
Yeah, a statute. So.
With our department heads being very reasonable, intelligent, smart, honest people, which I can honestly say is my, is my impression. Um if there's any question, they should be coming to us, but but for obvious things, they don't have to, and. And I didn't necessarily answer the direct question with that comment, but uh. Uh I have a lot of faith in that.
What I I, we'll throw, we'll try to create a policy that incorporates the RSA and then maybe gives guidelines for a threshold, I don't know, between five and ten, that. You're still looking for them to get at least some reasonable quotes that support that they're spending.
Comes to this table.
Yeah.
Provided it comes to some table, because I wanna be able to produce evidence for the public. That the tax money's been spent in accordance with the discussion of the executive giving the budget and all that stuff, I mean, there still needs to be some footmarks.
Right, okay.
But I don't, I I think if the statute. Is now ten and it was five and we didn't hear below five, then we're not gonna hear below ten.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we send a bunch of liberal Democrats out and spend for admission, but. We stand, we are still. Is that an oxymoron?
All right, that, that, I see.
Yeah.
Just go with it, okay, sometimes you just go with it. We'll talk about it and we'll bring it back, but then we just wanna make you aware of, that's all I have, I'm gonna do uh speed dating now, old business, no, new business, no. Consent agenda items, vote to accept the weekly manifest in minutes of May twenty-nine, twenty, June four. Second, Commissioner Wasma, Commissioner England, yes, I, I. Uh calendar, no changes, general discussion, we already had, non-public, we already had, so we're going to reach us now to do the. Walk through of the uh the department inspections.
So how do you wanna do this? Because you wanna do some of this alone. Okay, the only, yeah, do we wanna?